Hi, everyone. We started a bit late. There were some technical difficulties. We're now starting and it's being recorded just so that those in attendance know.
Okay. So Nate, I've got my preamble here. Are they gonna sure I saw today that they zoom the virtual meeting. It's been extended to 2025. Today?
Right, yeah, effective immediately. And so the town, you know, we can, you know, the town manager said we'll continue meeting remotely and then they're working on whether it's a policy or some guidelines, or, you know, if a border committee would want to meet in person, the idea is that it might be a hybrid format where people can still be remote because the idea is we would, you know, want to provide the same level of service and meeting recordings as we
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I was just wondering if the preamble was going to get shortened to that.
No, I think tonight we can just do the normal one. Sorry, yes.
That was really my only question. Okay, so, and I misplaced my document that shows me all the things that I'm supposed to do in order. So you correct me whenever I'm going wrong, but I think at this point I'm opening the this meeting of the historical commission March 30th, 2023. And pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL C 30A, section 18, and pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and extended by chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, and extended again by the state legislature on July 14th, 2022, and signed into law on July 16th, 2022. This public hearing and public meeting of the Town of Amherst Historical Commission is being conducted via remote participation. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so by Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. A hyperlink to this here to this meeting and hearing has been posted on the town's online calendar. I think maybe now we go to a roll call attendance vote. Okay. So a roll call attendance vote. Pat off?
Present.
Matty Helmer. Matty Helmer, are you present on?
Oh, you're muted.
Present. Thank you. Becky Lockwood. So I have to remember everybody's last name is Becky Lockwood.
Present.
Eddie Startup.
Present.
And Robin Fordham, I am present. It really helps when the last names are in the windows there, Nate. I heard nothing there for my cheat sheet today. So I believe that we are going to start. So Nate, I did not see an agenda in my in my emails or in the packet. And I know that we have three separate properties where we convening. Want to just suggest how we should go about convening these hearings? I mean, we should open to public hearing for all three properties. Go through significance first, then preferably preserved for for anything that's been found significant.
Right, yeah. So I think the, because they're owned by the same owner, I think we can open the hearing for all three. And then, you know, we can walk, we can hear our presentation or look at documentation for all three of them. But then, you know, we could take votes individually. But I think it makes sense to open the hearing for all three. Yep.
Okay. And do we need a vote to open the hearing? I can't remember.
No, no, you can just read the, you know, the, there's no agenda other than the legal notice is because it is just the hearing. So it's just that.
All right. I think I'm using a previous version with the new addresses. So hopefully this is right. So in accordance with the provisions of MGL chapter, Master General Law, Chapter 40A, and Article 3.60 of Amherst General Bylaws, Preservation of Historically Significant Buildings, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. The Amherst Historical Commission is holding this public hearing to provide an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the following demolition, demolition application requests. They are 126 Southeast Street, Salome Construction, a request to demolish a circuit, excuse me, 1920, single family home on property and any attached structures. 140 Southeast Street, Salome Construction, request to demolish a circuit 1902, family home on property and any attached structures. And 148 Southeast Street, Salome Construction, request to demolish a circa 1927, single family home on property and any attached structures. So with that, do we go to town information first, or do we go to our applicant presentation first, Nate?
I think we can ask the applicants if they're here to raise their hands and they can make the presentation. And then staff report. John, we're going to ask you to be become a panelist. That way you can just speak and make it easier.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Two seconds. And there we are. Okay. So the three properties that that we've applied for are all on Southeast Street. The of the houses that we're looking at are in pretty rough shape. They've been, they've had multiple renovations done throughout the years. And I think the the oldest structure has had several renovations at some point, which I'm not sure if Nate, were you able to get my email that I sent late this afternoon?
Yeah, I was just getting those opened up.
Okay. So I'm not sure if you'd like to start just speaking in general and that, you know, we were looking to demolish the three houses to make room for some more housing that could be similar to what is across what we're building across the street. Is there, is there any preference or would would someone like to hear about any of them individually? Or I mean, there's not a lot to say this. I could not find a whole lot of history on on many. I know that the information came back with one of them that's posted or could be posted on the 18. Can't recall at the top of my head. I'm sorry, with the the map that was that was associated with it.
Yeah, that that was, I did the research earlier this week. That was the Edwards House, Simeon Edwards. That was the one where you can see the title chain ties back to him and you can see him on the, I think it was the 1860 map.
Okay.
And then, sorry, John, just quickly, if you want to share your screen, you can. If not, I can. I could, you know, share my screen. You know, as a panelist, you're able to do that. So if you have anything you wanted to do or?
I'm just, I'm kind of limited as to what I can do with my tablet. And it, and I've kind of locked myself away from where my emails and pictures are. And I'm just fearful that I'll lose you all.
Sure. Let me, I'm going to share my screen. I was just going to do the Google Street View to start, and then we can get to the pictures. But at least that way we have, you know, we can walk through the the property. So.
Okay. So this is 127. And this has a board form foundation, board form, concrete foundation. It's had multiple additions and renovations. Everything to the right is an addition. The interior is is definitely seen. Definitely seen a fair amount of use. The electrical in here is definitely due for another upgrade. And it has been re-sited and there are some windows in it, but it's this is probably the best of the three houses. And it's still, I don't have any pictures of the interior. There's other than I do, I think I believe, I believe I sent some to to Nate that have the the basement.
Yeah, we can look at those after the street view if you'd like.
Yeah, this is the 140. This is the house that has is the oldest, I guess. So what I found today was that at some point, I believe this house was either rebuilt or or redone. There's about, if you could pull back on that, kind of go to the left a little bit so you can see the edge of, yeah, go that way a little bit more. Look sideways. So that, everything from that corner back is is a is an addition. And everything in the front of the house was actually raised at one point because underneath the underneath that stone, there's probably a foot, foot and a half of of red brick on top of the rubble foundation that's underneath. The floor joists in there are standard rough sans floor joists. They do not appear to be to me, they don't appear to be older than the 1900s. So I'm not sure if the floor was taken out when the when the addition was put on, but it does not, it doesn't seem to match. I I currently live in a house that's was finished in 1789. So I do have a little bit of experience with older looking houses and and what we've gotten into in in our trade as to what as far as renovations and things like that. So the houses, the house is in pretty rough shape. It's being held up by some some four by fours and and some posts and it is, and is, and it is not. It's going to require, it would require a ton of work just to get it back to something decent. It also has new siding that was probably put on in the 40s or 50s, which was, which is that it's kind of like a ribbed, panelized siding. And the windows were were put in some years ago and they don't really fit the openings. And there's some photos of that that I that I picked up on today. 148 is definitely of the 1930s foundation. And the addition in the back was sometime after that. So that's, that's just a regular CMU block foundation in the back. The front is what I assume was the original part of the house. I didn't see, I didn't see inside of this one. But I can tell you has the same siding as the other, the other house next door.
All right. Great. And I was going to do the new share or maybe I'll stop this and I'll go to the emails just so we can if we walk through the images, John, if you want to just, it may be the same thing, but we can just, if there's something you see that's different.
Right. This one, this one is the same. This is the 148. It shows the the 1930s block with the with the more modern straight block behind.
Yeah, kind of a little, little odd intersection of.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And then this is the back of the house. You can see how the windows are fit in or not.
This is the back of one, the back of 148.
Correct. And this is 140. And it has the same same siding as 148.
Is this, is it? Sorry, I just see the meter. Is this a two family? Is this, is it considered a two family?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think you're right. The addition.
And you'll see, so if you look at those stones there, you'll see that that's what the house is supported on. Once we go in the basement, if I can, those are clear, which are they're tipped and pitched as the the rubble foundation underneath is kind of falling apart. So this is the framing from underneath. It's a full two by six with with a, you know, rough sun two by six with with planking on top. I think the next picture shows it a little bit better. Nope. But this is, so to the right is is a pier that's been hollowed out. I don't know if it was an original chimney. But it's definitely holding a beam or trying to hold a beam and there's not much left of it. And this is where the the brick and the rubble foundation come together in the back.
So this is where the back addition is. So the
Correct.
So the this stone is probably under the front facing part of the house and this is under the rear.
Yes. Yep. Some more images of that. And that's on the other side, the brick as it comes up to the front, towards the front of the house. So there's there's a, that's the back wall. I believe that there was one more. I thought there was one more photo of the underside, but.
Yeah, I'll keep scrolling down. I printed it as a PDF.
Okay. So there's, there's kind of the transition there. It's on the, to the left of what was a door opening there. That's where the where the transition from rubble foundation to to brick. And so there you can see that the it was, it was either pushed up or or rebuilt. I'm not exactly sure. But you have the rubble foundation and then you have the brick, the brickwork on top. And then on top of that, you have the the flat stone that everything kind of sits on.
Yeah, my, I used to own a house on Halleck Street that had the same same kind of configuration and stone and then and then a brick level.
Okay.
And it was built in in 1860, that one.
Okay. All right.
There's more pictures of the foundation. This is all, this is all 140, right?
Yes, it is. Yes.
I was trying to, I thought you had sent a
Yeah, there's the, that last one is the one where it shows from the outside, you can see that the the stone is sitting on top of the the brick and then the other picture shows it that way. Okay.
And then there's also another email. Just make sure that's this is what happened? What number is this?
127.
This is 127. All right.
So it has vinyl siding. That's the board form finished concrete foundation. And then this is the the basement. Basement area framing.
Is this for, is this 127 as well still?
Yes, it is.
And is that a true two by or is that just dimensional lumber?
Um, it is, it is more closely to to dimensional lumber. I did not measure it, but I'm not sure if what I was looking at was had been replaced. There has been some work that's been done on on this home as well.
And then here's just the electrical panel.
Yeah, there's some there's an older electrical panel and and some older, what looks to be knob and tube or some sort of equipment that's tied in up there as well.
Right. I think those are the images.
Yep, that that's pretty much everything that I had. I wasn't sure exactly what what you folks would need to kind of make a determination, but just was was out there today and just wanted to get a few additional photos to kind of give you, give an idea on on what it was, what it's sitting on and and how it was built from underneath.
Thank you. Nate, do we have more information from the town?
Yeah, I think the well, hold on one second. The you know, I uploaded some information to the online packet and I'll share that in a minute. I think the, there's, there's not a lot of research. So, you know, Robin as chair did the title chain back to try to determine, you know, the age of the homes or, you know, who lived there. In terms of the town's research, you know, they're the the homes are outside of a national register, the ECMRIS Village Center. They weren't part of a proposed expansion. They've never been inventoried. You know, back in the 60s and 70s, the town in 80s, the town started inventorying properties, whether it was just with photographs or you know, any hi- history that was, you know, the town engineer at the time could find. And on these properties, I think it was in the 70s, all that there is is just a picture. And there's no information about anything in terms of what used to be there. So sometimes if the, if, you know, if the home was, say, related to a certain family or had been part of a certain use, they may have made, you know, there had been some handwritten notes actually saying, oh, this was part of an old farmstead or something. And honestly, I couldn't find it. I went through special collections and and there really wasn't a lot. And so I was just going to share my screen again. I think, you know, what, what is here's this 1873 map, if this is visible. And so, you know, Robin was saying is that it's going to zoom in a little bit. You know, the Watson Farm here, and there's the Watson House here, and then
Nate, can you let's see, can you center that area at all? Or is that?
Yeah, I was trying to
There we go. That's all the way.
Yeah, I'm going to zoom in a little bit and then also bring it into focus into the view. So, you know, this is this is part of the, right now, here's the school building, the East School. And this is the Town Common, East, the Eastville, you know, the East Town Common. And so here's, you know, where we're, here's essentially Route 9 is somewhere here. And then there's a house here. And then the Cutler House here. And again, this is 1873. And, you know, although we can trace back some families, I can't say definitively that these two squares here represent the homes that are there.
Right. That's right. So Clarissa Cutler is definitely on that for the, was it 140 is the center one, close, close. And and it's the house that sticks out to me the most visually as like, you know, one of these is not like the others. So.
Yeah. And so I think, you know, it's just hard to say exactly, you know, for instance, you, John, you said the home may have been moved or raised, and perhaps that was the case. I mean, this is was historically a really wet area. I mean, the Fort River is just off the screen to the right here. And you know, this is the water that comes down here. You can see the stream here. You know, this is all wetland here. And I, you know, I feel like the water just would have just moved right down through where those homes were. You know, here are the the images that were associated with the application. They're small, but just to walk through them. And, you know, the application forms themselves, you know, the dates of the homes on a legal notice. So I think, you know, I mentioned that the dates of the homes are interesting. The assessors' records were updated a few points in history where, you know, there were a major update of assessors' records. And I mentioned this to the applicant that 1900 is a date that is a default date that when they were transcribing from handwritten records and maybe going into digital. If something wasn't legible or there was a mistake, 1900 is a date that just populated a lot of property cards. And as does 1966, you know, I don't know why those two days. But if you look at certain properties, you'll see 1900 a lot. And so I think that's, that number may not be as accurate. The 1920 and 1927, interestingly enough, may be accurate, just because it's, you know, it's a a specific year, I, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to tie it back. But, you know, I think that's the only I mean, that's really the only research I have. You know, these homes were here in 1956. They're part of a little neighborhood here. And, you know, but I don't, you know, I couldn't find any, anything that really tied them back.
When we, you were looking in special collections, Nate, I know I got that information too late. Were you able to look under Simeon Edwards or Clarissa Cutler to?
No, I just did some quick searches. I didn't see anything. And so
So it's possible there, but I mean, I'm just curious if it's possible, there might be a little bit of more information, just because I ran out of, I ran out of time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So the research, the town typically do is try to find the names and then figure out if it's the same house. And it's just hard to make that connection right now.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not, it's not clear.
Okay. Um, do you have questions from commissioners for either the applicant or Nate? Raise your hand or just go ahead and speak freely. Or shake your head no. I had he has a question.
Yeah, I want to ask you a little bit, John, about ownership. You know, when did you acquire these houses? You know, do you know anything about whether they were rented or empty? Or do you know much about, say, the last 10, 15 years of what's been going on in these buildings? Not just in terms of the physical, what we can physically see. But, you know, what kind of rentals have they been or?
I don't have the specifics as to what they were as far as rentals. Yes, they are rentals. And and I believe they're student rentals and they were purchased a few years back. And I don't have the date exactly, but I did run across it when I, when I put the application through when the owner had bought each property.
So were they bought when the new apartment block was under construction or when the foundations were going in across the street?
No, these, this was purchased a few years back. So that would have been, it was prior to the start of the of the of the other, of the other project.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to say it was more than five years ago or somewhere in that neighborhood, if I had to recall.
So with the three houses that we're looking at for tonight, are we looking at six rentals or four rentals or eight rentals? How many, how many units are there? Just, I'm just curious.
I I believe one of them is listed as a duplex. The other, the other is just a, a single family and I'm not sure of 148. So it's three, I believe it's total of three, three rentals, but one of them is split.
Okay. Into a duplex.
Yeah, but it is student housing.
And then the one with the gambrel roof, 148. That's the one you're not sure about how it was rented?
They're, they're all student rentals.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a single rental on 148.
Got it. Got it. I mean, just, this is just a comment rather than a question, but that house is looks to me like, you know, it's the most viable. Am I wrong about that?
I just want to jump in, Hetty.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, viability really isn't.
Isn't a question. Right.
So
Okay, good point.
Yep, yep. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand raise. Okay.
Fine.
Go ahead, Pat. Nope, you're muted.
Sorry about that. My question is, before you filed the demolition request, was any attempt made to see if if the buildings were sold to be moved, that that is a possibility? And I guess structurally, could they be moved?
Um, of the two that I was underneath today, I would say no. And I can't imagine that the 148 is in that good a shape just because of the way the addition was put on on the back. Could they be moved? I I don't know. I I'm not a house mover. But but I know that looking at the two that I was underneath, I I don't believe I would attempt to move them. There wouldn't be anything left.
Thank you.
Nate, go ahead. You're muted, Nate.
Yeah, I realized that. Sorry, I was looking online. The the property cards indicate that the current owner bought these in 2003. So they've been owned for, you know, 20 years. And going back on some of the, on two of the properties, it looks like, I mean, it's really hard to say. Some of the older property cards don't indicate whether they were rented or owner occupied or not owner occupied. But looking at the property cards, it looks like the you know, 148 and 127 were possibly, you know, rented prior and one, the middle one maybe wasn't just based on the owner's names, but you know, that's tricky, right? So, you know, it looks at, you know, at least for the last 20 years, possibly more, these were all rentals. And, you know, I was just going to share my screen again, just so we we see it. You know, this is, this is 148. You know, this is, this is one forty-eight right here. The further south one, here's, um. Here's the other one that has, you know, the addition in the back. So this is one forty. And then here's the, um, the other one, um, which, yeah, which, you know, is, it appears to be in really good shape. But, you know, it, it's hard to say, but at least for, you know, quite a bit of time, they have been rented. Or, you know, the, or the owner has owned them. I don't, you know, I can't say that they've always been rented, but the owners owned them for twenty years. So it's not, it's not as if they bought them necessarily six months ago when the other building was being built. I think that was asked, but I think they, they've been owned prior to that.
And they've always been a rental since he's owned them.
Okay, um, any other questions from the commissioners before we move to deliberation? Oh, Hattie has her hand up.
Looks like some trees have been removed. Is that something that the current owner has done between the first and the second building?
Um, I think that must have been a few years back. I think that the Google Maps is a little, is a little, is a little dated.
Okay. Seeing no other hands. Nate, you wanna help me structure this next part? So we have three properties in front of us for which we need to determine significance. Should we just go ahead with one twenty? Can't remember the number. The one twenty, whatever it is. Yeah, I've got one twenty-six on my chart here.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, we have not, uh, done a significance review in a while. And actually, I think maybe Madeline. Were you on the commission when we would review a property for six and significance first? Are you familiar with that process? Or actually, show of hands, who, who is familiar with the process? I'm raising mine, but I know Pat has been here. Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, I'm looking at the bylaw and I can see the sort of three criteria.
Yep.
That we consider.
Do you wanna put that on the screen, Nate?
Yeah, I can show the screen. I can. Is that legible or is it, should be a little bigger?
Uh, that's legible to me.
Sure. So, you know, the, this is, you know, section F in the bylaw standards for designation as a significant building. You know, so it meets the aid requirement. And then there's these numbered ones. One is the building is individually listed on or is contributing structure within an area listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Or is the subject of a pending application? And it is not, right? So I mentioned that we had looked at expanding the East Village National Register District, but I didn't include these properties, so.
So I think, um, at this point, maybe the best thing to do would be to ask commission members if they, if any of them believe that one twenty-six. Uh, uh, Southeast Street warrants a discussion for significance as opposed to getting into why or why it might not be. Is there anyone who has an argument in favor of significance? I do not.
I don't think I understand what you're saying.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so typically, you know, the way the Bala works, staff is the commission's designee to determine significance. And if staff determines it's significant, then it, that's usually when it gets to the public hearing process with the commission. But there's also a provision, whereas if the designee, me, can't make that determination, I refer it to the commission. And then the commission has to then first determine significance and then determine whether or not it should be uh, preferably preserved or allow demolition. And so the hearing really right now is, you know, the significance hasn't been determined.
Right.
Going through for each, you know, each, um, each structure.
But Robin, what do you mean? Are you saying? Can you just clarify what you said?
In the past, we used to go through each criteria and, um, take votes around whether commission members felt that it was or wasn't significant. And, um, then after going through all the, the criteria, in that case, it was there were like about, you know, eight or ten different areas, four different votes. We determine significance. But if no one on the commission thinks that this building meets the mark of significance, we could shortcut that process by, uh, essentially, dispensing with any deliberation if there's nobody in, in favor of the idea that it is historically significant. They can't make an argument that it's significant for, I mean, it was, I, I guess, I don't even know if this was an agricultural area, it seems like, you know, but, um, for this particular building and the information that I was able to gather, I don't see anything about it being in the context of a group of buildings or as part of a view shed or historical architectural value. So. That's why I was asking commission members if anyone felt there was an argument to be made for significance. If somebody said, for example, that, um, yes, I think that, um, the craftsmanship warrants significance, then we would vote on the basis of that. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah, I just couldn't tell if you were, which way you were going. Okay. So you think it's not significant?
Yes, right. I don't think it's significant under any of the characteristics here.
I agree with you.
All right. I will say the same. I agree.
I also agree. It's not, not significant.
Agreed. I have a kind of follow-up weird question, Robin, which is that based on that eighteen seventy-three map which shows Southeast Street, are we reasonably confident that the three buildings under discussion tonight are on that map?
Um, based on the title research that I did, and that was distributed to the commission, the only lot that I was confident there was a good chance that the building in question corresponded with the building on the map would be the next property over.
Okay.
To me, Simeon Edwards.
That's really helpful.
Right. It did not look like, um, this building did not look to come up on the map, uh, around that time period from, from what I was looking at. Um, and the, um, title chain, when, when you reviewed, as I've been learning to do this, when you review the title chain process, each, each deed should reference the deed before it. And sometimes you get to an ending point because there's no deed before it. And sometimes you just get to an ending point because somebody has left that information off. And then you need to go and look in the index and see if you can pick up the trail again. Um, but based on the visual appearance of this building and the fact that the title chain ended around the twenties, I think. Um, and the fact that it didn't correspond particularly well to the maps that I look at, that's what I'm basing my opinion on.
Okay, so we've taken care of the first building.
Uh, we actually, so, so I think at this point, um, we need to, we, with the commission seems to be in agreement, but we need to vote uh, this building's status as significant or not significant. So I need a motion. And then, uh, when I can ask for further discussion, then we can vote. Becky?
I'll motion, I motion that we vote that this building is not historically significant.
Okay, enjoy the second.
Second.
And any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, seeing none, I'll go with a roll call vote, uh, starting with Hattie.
Agreed, not, not significant.
Okay, uh, Becky?
Agreed, not significant.
Pat?
Agreed, not significant.
And Madeline?
Agreed.
And I agree as well. So that's a vote five to zero uh, in favor of determining that this building is not significant according to the demolition or the it's not to call the demolition delay by law anymore, um, according to the bylaw. So. One down, two to go. Okay, so, um, the next property is one forty Southeast Street. And I'm gonna see if any commission members have comments before I make my comments. Um, feel free to raise your hand. I've got you guys, oh wait. Jimmy, wanna, want to comment on one forty Southeast Street? Since I have lost, I'm trying to get all of you in my screen here. Madeline has disappeared now.
I can stop sharing if you'd like for now, my.
Okay, okay. So no comments from anybody? Okay. So based on the research that I did for this building, now, of course, I don't have the language in front of me. I would say my concern at this point when we look at a building and approve or, um, reject a request for demolition. Um, in terms of preservation, along with rehabilitating, well, along with imposing a demolition delay, um, the objective for the demolition delay would to have an outcome either to rehabilitate the building, preserve it, move it, salvage it, uh, or document it. And I think my concern right now is that I, if, if this building is the building that appears on the eighteen sixty map, um, some, and, and I'd like Nate to weigh on this, whether it warrants further documentation before demolition. Just due to the age and the fact that we are, I know that it's not within the, um, within the historic district area, but the fact that we're, um, trying to, well, we've had, had a couple, a number now of buildings come before us of older, smaller, more modest houses that would have been more characteristic of early Amherst. I think it's easy to overlook um, these smaller buildings as, um, not particularly impressive. Um, and I would just hate to see this one taken down before, um, maybe a more professional eye had a view of it. And we maybe got some more pictures or, or made a few more connections. Um, so that, that's, that's my, my one hesitation. Um, is just documentation before demolition. Does anyone wanna weigh in? And actually, you know, I, I realize I'm getting, it's, it's a little bit challenging to, um, organize these discussions. But I'm putting the, the cart before the horse a little bit because I'm really talking about preservation. But, um, I, I feel like, uh, there's an argument to be made for the potential for this building to be consi- significant on the basis of the social context, depending what we find out about. If we're able to find anything out about Simeon Edwards in that particular area. I, I sensed that there might be a story there to be told which would, um, tip this building into the significant, uh, camp. And I'm trying to think in the past, I think in circumstances like this, we have tabled or Nate can help me with this tabled or delayed a vote to allow time for a little bit more information. So not, not a lot of time, but a little, little bit more time to pursue that path a little bit further. So that might be what I'm suggesting here is that we, we table and, um, the significance vote on this particular structure to get more information between now and our next ability to meet so that we can make a better determination about, um, a demolition delay. So I see that Pat has her hand up.
Um, Robin, I'm, I'm agreeing with you that I think if indeed it is the structure that's on that map, that it does have a history. That, that needs to be documented. It doesn't necessarily mean that demolition can't proceed once that's done. But I, I do think that there needs to be documentation and, um, the history taken into account, even though for the last twenty-some odd years, it's been a rental that ha- hasn't been cared for. Um, the history is still important to document.
Thank you. Becky?
Um, I'm just, it seems to me, you've done a lot of research, Nate's tried that it, that there isn't anything else. And it isn't clear to me. Sure, this is the same house, um, that's on the map. And it, it isn't clear to me what more there is to find out, I guess, is, is my question. And who will do that?
Okay. And I mean, the, my response, that was my earlier question to Nate regarding whether or not, because I got to, um, I, I turned to, to researching these properties so late in the process that, um, having, when you're, when you're doing research on, on houses, you kind of do this back and forth between, you know, you go to the title chain, you go to the map. Once you get the name Simeon Edwards, like I tried to do a newspaper search and there were so many, I wasn't expecting so many Simeon Edwards to pop up. Sometimes you can get information there, um, with the name, the special collection search might be different. Nate can tell me if that's true or not. But that, that would be, um, as I, especially in terms of special collections and somebody who has a stronger grasp of the, um, history of Amherst and it's, um, you know, the, the kind of the players of that era, um, that's what I would be looking for. So I don't know if you wanna jump in, Nate, give your.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I'm, you know, I guess I would say if, for instance, the commission found this building to be significant, the next step is, you know, is the impact of its loss enough to have it be preferably preserved or allow the demolition to proceed. And so, you know, I, I almost wanna take it to that next question because, you know, we could die, I mean, we could ask the applicant to have photo documentation. You know, do we, what, I guess, I guess, I'm, I'm curious, what other, are we, would we want that documentation to help whether it should be perfectly preserved? Or are we, you know, are we concerned enough that if it's, that if it's not there, that the loss of of it is, is, you know, detrimental somehow to the character and history of, of, you know, spec- you know, of Amherst and specifically that neighborhood. And so, I'm, um, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess I could go either way. We could continue the hearing. It has to be to a date certain. I'm, I will say I have limited time to research. Um, you know, and then I would really wanna make sure we are clear with the applicant, what kind of documentation we would want. And if it's photo documentation, I think that could happen pretty easily. Is it, you know, um, additional photographs on the interior? They might have to give notice to tenants. But I guess I, I just would wanna make sure, you know, what kind of documentation, Robin, are you looking for? That could or couldn't happen with the building there. For instance, we can always look at the history. Um, unless we think that's really important in terms of weighing its significance or its preferably preserved status.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, it's, it's a, it, it is a confusing decision tree, right? Because you, you, we weigh on them. We should have relatively straightforward, um, discussion about whether it's significant or not. And I think I'd be getting stuck on that because I feel like I don't have quite enough information to definitively claim that it is. At which point I would argue for a request to, for further documentation of photographs. Um, and I, I don't know enough at this point, um, about, um, documenting internal structures and what value that has. I guess I'm trying to figure out what's the value to the town is, um, creating a form B for a building that's gonna be demolished. An important part of our inventorying, if it is, you know, it's such an early part of the town's history. Um, these are all, these are all questions that I have. So, um, I, I don't think that we've had anybody do a, um, like a structural reporter. And maybe it doesn't, um, it doesn't rise to that, that level. There's just something about, there's, I, for me, there's something, when I get to that point where I'm researching it and I see the title name and I see it on the map and I think, oh, you know, this is. So, um, is there, can you give any guidance in terms of what the town, how much effort the town is concerned about in terms of getting something inventory that's gonna be demolished?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would, it would, it would be a little like, um, kind of part and parcel with doing that research, right? So if we were to complete an inventory form now, you know, we could. You know, we could list the architecture, we'd have a questionable age and history. And so we have to kind of continue to do that research, you know, we could describe the architecture now. We could, but we wouldn't be able to, um, you know, this inventory form has, you know, kind of two narrative sections, ones on the architectural description, ones on kind of the social ownership, you know, political history of it, and so I feel we'd have to just continue that anyways as part of that uh inventory.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I feel like architecturally, it does look old, but I'm not sure it's you know, right, so I didn't deem it significant because I'm not sure it met the criteria in the bylaw in terms of its
Right.
Is it an exemplary style, is it
Right.
Certain craftsmanship, is it, even if it's a part of the, say, Edwards family or Watson Farm family, is that enough to um make it significant? I just, I just couldn't say yes.
Yep, yep. Um, and I will say that, um, it certainly, any of my commissioners are free to suggest, to, to make a motion to deem it not significant. And we can take a vote, um, if, if we feel like a discussion is done, that's, you know, that's the other option. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming that, that the applicant is amenable, if we want to have any more pictures taken, um, we could, but.
Can we come, is it possible to um come back and let the brain cogitate a little bit? Um, come back to this decision once we've looked at the third building?
Sure, sure, let me just.
I know that's a bit backwards, but I just feel like, I don't want to, yeah.
Yeah, um, Becky has her hand up.
Oh, I was just going to make a motion to um suggest it's not significant, but if, if Hetty wants to, I mean, it's fine to
If you want to pause.
Take a few minutes, yes.
Okay, why don't we do that? So that's, uh, one forty-eight, is that right? One forty-eight Southeast Street?
No, it's one forty. I think it's one forty.
So the middle house was one forty and now we move on to one forty-eight.
Yes, right. So we just paused on one forty. And we're moving forward to one forty-eight, the Gamble Roof, uh nineteen twenty-seven circa house. And again, um, we can uh, I can ask the commissioners if anybody uh feels they have an argument for um voting this property being historically significant based on the criteria in the bylaw. Okay. So then I could ask commissioners, uh, if anybody would be interested in making a motion related to one forty-eight Southeast Street in terms of its historical significance.
I, I would make a motion that the building at one forty-eight Southeast Street is not significant.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I can second that.
Becky seconds, uh, so any other further discussion on one forty-eight South Street in terms of historical significance? No, okay, so we will go to a vote. Uh, so we are voting, uh, the motion before us is to affirm that one forty-eight Southeast Street is not historically significant according to the bylaw. Um, Madeline? Your vote?
Right, yeah, I agree.
Okay, uh, Becky?
I voted is not significant.
Okay, uh, Pat?
I agree, it's not significant.
Okay, and Hetty?
Not significant.
And I also vote in the affirmative, not significant, so that was a five-zero vote for one forty-eight Southeast Street, uh, not significant according to the um conditions of the bylaw. So now we're back to one forty-eight, that was quick.
So with the, um, the house in the middle.
Yep, one forty-eight, I mean, one forty, sorry, yep.
That is possibly older and possibly related to the name of a building, the name associated with a building on the eighteen seventy-three Hampshire map. I would like to see a little bit more information gathered for a Form B listing. I do know that under discussion in the town for the central fire station, that they are looking for a, to complete a Form B for the central fire station, even though the town needs a new fire station and in, you know, so it's just a, a kind of another layer of documentation, maybe some more pictures of the interior.
Okay.
I don't know how long that process would take or whether we need to specify that.
So the, um, the issue before us is whether, so given that, that at least two of us are interested in a little bit more information, but as Nate has pointed out, most of that probably doesn't require the building being standing. Does anybody want to make a motion regarding the building's status, status of significant or not significant? Becky?
Well, I would like to make a motion, um, stating that it is not significant. Um, but I think we, can we also add if people want more documentation that they can do so?
I think, yeah, I think that we can, um, we can vote on the status of its, of its significance and handle the issue of documentation separately.
Okay.
Um, and I, so I think, uh, so, so we have a motion from Becky, do we have a second?
I second.
Pat, seconds, okay.
And I, I just want to add to that is that I think Hetty's suggestion that the documentation take the, the form of a Form B. Um, and so that the house will be uh recorded with whatever history we know. And that you've, you've delved into, Robin, I, I, I have a tendency to, to agree with Nate that there probably isn't a whole lot more than that. But that's enough to, to make claim to its history. So that, that would be my suggestion i- in addition to the second.
Okay, uh, Nate?
Here, I was gonna, um just share my screen again, the, um you know, this is, you know, my guess is this, this is visible, correct?
Yes.
Here's the house, so here's the front of the house, you know, this would be the older section, uh, the Mansard roof is, um still could be an old addition, but possibly not original, and I was gonna say that it just, on College Street, there's a few homes here. That are of similar style. You know, tucked in here. And, you know, they're listed as being built in nineteen hundred. Uh, and they're not on the eighteen seventy-three map, so nineteen hundred, you know, it could be late nineteen seventy-three, but, um, anyways, I was gonna say that it looks that they're similar to these, um, there was three at one point, um, but now two homes and so you know, it could, it could be that they're, you know, that whether it was the same family or that they were a type of worker housing, I mean, we had said that these homes, I haven't researched it, but that they were they were owned by workers and also maybe by African-American families, and so there is some history here, I, but again, there is not a lot of research, uh, sometimes on some of, on some of the homes that are outside districts or things that haven't been inventoried, but you know, I, I do think that we could do a little bit more research, I guess the question still goes back to you know, let's just say for devil's advocate, we have a discussion that we say they're significant. The next question is, are the, is it worth being preferably preserved? I guess that's where, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but you know, if we find them not significant. Uh, yeah, I guess we maybe want to say it with the condition that it still be researched, I don't know, I just, I want to make sure we're you know, or have, we have a good process after that, after the vote.
Yeah, um, I, I agree, and I'm gonna, was gonna backtrack myself a little bit, we're in the, just, we, we have a motion before us, uh, to uh, that the, that the property is not historically significant, we have a second, we're in the, um additional discussion section, and I was gonna backtrack on my own statement earlier to say that I, I would feel com- comfortable voting, uh, that this property is not significant simply because it has lost most of its historic integrity.
Yeah.
I, I think I was looking for a basis to vote in the affirmative or in the negative for the significance part, that, that's what was challenging me. So, uh yeah, it, it had significance to a certain point, there's still aspects of it, they're probably worth documenting, which we can do on a voluntary basis with a set with, either with the commission, um, or, and, and or the owner. And go forward in that regard, so that would be, if that helps anybody make their decision around a vote for or against significance, that's what I would say, there was some, if that helps clarify things.
Yeah, I think I, I would vote, uh, that it's not significant based on what you're saying, Robin, and I was thinking of abstaining. But I think I'll vote in the affirmative.
Do we have any other discussion between commissioners? Okay, then I.
Yeah, let me leave you with a little idea, though, because, because, you know, I bet you in the eighteen eighties and eighteen nineties that the people who lived in these three homes had no problem walking up to the East Village Center of Amherst and getting what they needed there, whether it was employment
Yeah.
or, you know, so, um
Well, that, yeah, yeah.
That's, I think, what we've been trying to kind of tease out here, um, and we'd, we'd like to document that.
Yep. Okay, um, so if there's no further discussion, we can go ahead with the vote, uh, the motion before us is, in the affirmative that the property is determined to be not historically significant, uh, according to the bylaw. So I will start with Pat.
I agree, it's not a significant property.
Okay, uh, Madeline?
I agree.
Becky?
I vote it's not significant.
Okay, Hetty?
Not significant.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that's a five-zero vote, uh, that this property has been termed not historically significant in the terms of the bylaw. So at this point, I think the question, um, the questions are on documentation, Nate, or I understand that uh, the town's resources are flat out for doing this kind of documentation, this is where the lovely volunteers on the commission can come in if they want to help out. Um, if we want to start working on a Form B for this property, um, I think my only question would be, I would just love to get in there and particularly because I want to learn to understand how to recognize, um, now that I've had some training, how to recognize the historic features of the property. And take more pictures and I think that would be it, unless anybody else has any other, uh, any other requests.
No, I mean, I think, John, you're here, I think we could, you know, follow up with an email and set a date, you know, the next few weeks and work with, you know, you and the owner to, to have a site visit, if that's, if that's possible, you know, for photo documentation, I think that, you know.
I believe that, I believe that would be fine.
Okay, great.
And who would be responsible for doing the Form B? The owner?
Um, the four, so I'm working on Form Bs as part of my job now at PVPC, um, Form Bs are complicated and technical and really require pretty specific training. So, um, it's something that I've thought about trying to get a subgroup of the Historic Commission to work on together so that I'm not doing Form Bs all day and all night.
Yeah, and that, Robin, I can help, so if you want to, you know, I can help, um, I know they have requirements for the map and formatting pictures, and so I think, you know, if Robin and I can work on the Form B, if people, you know, if, if anyone wants to help with the research, I don't mind working on the form and then, you know, anyone can submit, anyone can complete a Form B, I think the owners have done the research, there really isn't a lot, I, I think it's then on us staff and commission to do that, um, you know, and I, uh, you know, so if there's you know, for instance, uh, when we were looking at local historic districts, volunteers in the committee end up doing Form Bs and they did a good job, you know, doing a, you know, bibliography, doing references and finding that, so I think some of that is what we'd have to do and, you know, uh, work with special collections and go to the library and do a little bit more digging, but I think it's something that we could pull together.
Yep. Okay. So I think, um, let's see, I think we were supposed to close the hearing before you voted, maybe, I don't remember.
No, no, sometimes, I said, sometimes, you know, yeah, uh, people go either way, but I think now we can have a motion to close the hearing, sometimes we like to keep it open just in case another tidbit of information comes in and we, if we close the hearing, we have to reopen it to, uh, new information, so I don't mind going.
Okay. Did we miss the opportu- opportunity for public comment in the hearing, or is there?
The hearing's still open, so you can.
Okay, all right, so, um, we should give the, the public opportunity to comment.
There's, there's two members in the public, there's one, and Grace, uh, Hilda, you can unmute yourself.
My only concern listening to this conversation is that your credibility may be a little bit at stake here if you push it too far because it doesn't look like a house that has any integrity left at all of, of an old house. And I think you might be better off saving your your reputation for something that's really important. Because it looks like whatever units are gonna be launched here are gonna be made up several times over by the new building, which would be more attractive. And I'm, I'm a preservationist, I don't want to tear anything down, but I, I, I worry about your credibility here. If you put too, too much emphasis on documenting and all that, and, and the time in a Form B isn't worth it. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Hilda.
Save, save your energy for the big one.
Thanks, Hilda.
We got some big ones coming, I'm counting up your energy, thank you.
Uh, any other members of the public who would like to make a comment? And seeing no hands, uh, I think we move to a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, and, uh, roll call vote, Hetty?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Madeline?
Yes.
Pat? Uh, Pat, you're muted, I saw you say yes.
Yes.
Five-zero, uh, vote to close the public hearing. And, uh, I believe that concludes our public meeting hearing for this evening.
It does, uh, John, thank you and thank you're the owner, I was gonna say, we can adjourn, I'll send an email to the commission as follow-up just to try to schedule the next meeting and then, John, I'll be reaching out to you just for a day and visit the, the site. You know, I'll kindly disagree with Hilda, I think, you know, we'll put the effort in to document it, I, you know, whether or not it's a questionably significant, I do think it's it's nice to document structures that may be humble and modest because, you know, just to, to have that have that piece of history, um, you know, like I said, there was a picture maybe from the seventies of this house, but it'd be nice to have a follow-up and some you know, we can include that, that older picture in the Form B and just kind of have it as a nice catalog, you know, record of it, so.
I'm sorry, it's okay, I just think the pictures that you, when you drove up College Street on Google Maps, be good to put those in as well.
Okay.
If there's any kind of stylistic similarity.
Right, oh, that's, yeah, that's a good point. I, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Uh, your job is not easy, um, and I, I did, I did go back to a couple of meetings, I, I spoke with Nate about, you know, what I would need to know, and I was just, I just felt a little bit short, I think, um, had I gotten some interior pictures of the of the home, maybe that would have helped, uh, clarify anything, but I do appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, commission members, I'll follow up with email just to confirm our next meeting date and, um, you know.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, bye.
We're adjourned.